Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I am joined today by my colleagues, the women on the L.A. City Council, and of course, the indomitable Patty Giggins from Peace Over Violence to celebrate and recognize the 25th anniversary of Denim Day. So please give them a round of applause. Sexual violence is an issue that plagues the entire nation. In fact, globally assaults on women are recognized even by the United Nations as a global health crisis. Every 73 seconds, someone in the United States is sexually assaulted. Yet despite these alarming numbers, sexual violence remains vastly underreported and often dismissed. This is why Denim Day holds such an immense importance, especially here in Los Angeles, and has been part of that recognition which has really transformed even our public safety response here in the city of Los Angeles. And it originates from an Italian Supreme Court case in which a rape conviction was overturned because the victim wore tight jeans, suggesting consent. Denim Day has become a global movement to challenge victim blaming attitudes and raise awareness about sexual violence. And by wearing denim today, we stand in solidarity with survivors, affirming that no clothing choice, behavior, or circumstance justifies sexual violence. We reject victim blaming narratives and instead advocate for a culture of consent, respect, and accountability. But Denim Day is not just about raising awareness. It's a call to action. It's a reminder that each of us has a role to play in ending sexual violence. And in my district, I've been proud to partner with the county to open up a Bridge Home Facility at the Silmar Armory to help women, many of whom have been the victims of sexual assault, that are now experiencing homelessness. Whether it's supporting survivors, educating others, or advocating for policy changes, we all have the power to make a difference. I want to thank Patty for all of her incredible leadership, for being an incredible partner with us here in the city of Los Angeles, just as I know that she has been at the county level as Executive Director of Peace Over Violence. She has been a force that has maintained the prevalence and strength of this movement here in the city and across the county of Los Angeles. And at this time, before I pass the mic over to Patty, I want to first introduce a video from our mayor, Karen Bass.
Hi, I'm Mayor Karen Bass. In my role as mayor, my top priority is the safety of the 4 million Angelenos who live in communities across our city. Key to this critical work is standing and fighting against sexual violence and assault. Every year in April, Denim Day brings us together to mark Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and every day, our community partners and city leaders make an enormous difference in the lives of Angelenos. And as we commemorate the 25th anniversary of Denim Day, I urge you to join this campaign and let us stand in solidarity. Sexual violence ends with all of us. Thank you, Los Angeles, for all that you do to end the violence and to support victims and survivors.
Thank you, Mayor Bass. And actually, I'm going to change gears a little bit. I told Patty, first, I think it's important that she gets her flowers. With all the work that she has dedicated and all of the momentum that she has helped build again across the city of Los Angeles and across the county in reforming even our response to what victims endure in a public safety response, she deserves all of the accolades and kind remarks that I know so many of my colleagues are about to bestow on her. And with that, I want to give that to her first before we give the mic over to her. And so with that, I'd like to, at this time, introduce my dear colleague from the 1st councilmatic district, Councilmember Eunice Hernandez.
Hello, everybody. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for your leadership in making this presentation happen. And good morning, colleagues and all our constituents who are here today. I'm proud to be standing in solidarity with my colleagues and Patty Giggins from Peace Over Violence, who has been doing this work for decades, and all survivors and allies to recognize the 25th anniversary of Denim Day. April is Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. I am a survivor of sexual violence. It happened to me in my freshman year of college by someone that I knew since middle school. And I know that my story is one of too many who have experienced this kind of harm. This day, what this day means to me is a day of empowerment, of remembering that we are not alone as survivors, that there are techniques and different things that we can learn to defend ourselves, and the most important thing, I will say again, is that we are not alone. It's going to take all of us to lead with an approach that centers care and prevents and repairs and reduces harm in our communities. And that includes in the funding and policymaking decisions we're making around this horseshoe to identify and fill the gaps we currently have to address this harm and to provide resources to our city departments, like community investment for families who are doing the work to connect people to safe spaces. We know that violence is preventable, and I am grateful to be here with all of you to rededicate ourselves to another 25 years of working together to create a world free from violence, sexual assault, and all forms of violence and harm. And I know that all the women council members are up here, but I call on my colleagues, my male counterparts. You know, 99% of sexual assault and sexual violence that occurs are by our male counterparts, and we oftentimes are experiencing the worst of the patriarchy. And so I just hope that you also stand with us and would love to see you out at Denim Day next year as well. Thank you again. And now I'll pass the mic back to Councilwoman Rodriguez. Thank you.
All right, she said it, gentlemen. Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Now I'd like to introduce Councilmember for the 4th district, Councilmember Ramon.
Thank you so much. And Councilmember Hernandez, your call for all of our male colleagues as well to speak up is, I hope, heard resoundingly in this body, so thank you. I want to thank Patty Giggins for just being an incredible leader on this issue for so long. And Councilmember Rodriguez, you have led every Denim Day since I've been on this council, so thank you so much for your resolute focus on this very, very important issue. I stand here today in front of you as a woman, as a mother of a daughter, and as a survivor myself, and, you know, really speaking today in the wake of what I know many survivors are reeling from, which is the overturning of Harvey Weinstein's guilty verdict in the appeals court in New York. That doesn't mean he's going to be free. He's, you know, convicted here in California as well and will likely serve that sentence. But I think for so many of us, you know, Patty, you've been in this work for decades. I think many of us came into it through the resurgence of the Me Too movement when Weinstein survivors spoke up, and it made it an issue that the world could not turn away from. The appeals court ruling, to me, underscores what I think so many survivors feel when they face the system, which is that the system is not for them. And my hope is that through the work that you do, through the work that all of us do in this council, and through the work of improving the system bit by bit, that we can indeed change this into a system that stands with survivors as they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramon. And now I'd like to introduce the Councilmember for the 5th district, Councilwoman Katie Young Yaroslavsky.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. It's such a pleasure to be here with you, Patty. Thank you so much for doing what you do every single year and keeping the focus on this. It's so important. This is an issue I care deeply about. I know those of us up here and out here do as well. The domestic and intimate partner violence statistics in L.A. are alarming, and they underscore a harsh reality that too many in our community, particularly women, face danger when they should feel safest, in their own homes. And these numbers aren't merely abstract. They represent our neighbors, our friends, our parents, our siblings, our children who suffer in silence. As others have pointed out, DV touches nearly every issue, especially our homelessness crisis, where the scars of domestic violence aren't just physical, but also deeply woven into the daily struggle for survival. In L.A., only 10% of DV survivors are able to access a safe shelter bed. In 2023, that meant that over 9,000 survivors were forced to choose between returning to an unsafe home or grappling with homelessness. And so the intersection of homelessness and domestic violence demands more than standard solutions. It requires tailored, compassionate strategies that address the unique challenges faced by those with a history of domestic violence. But the frustrating thing is that we all know this, and we hear rhetoric around it from our political leaders, and yet we don't see the resources we need to actually address it sufficiently. In fact, this year, Congress dramatically cut funding for the Victims of Crime Act, which will have very real consequences here in L.A. In a report that we expect CIFD to release today, there are estimates that these cuts will result in a 58% reduction in survivor services in L.A., a reduction or elimination of services for over 5,500 survivors, and a nearly 10% reduction in the number of DV shelter beds, which are already woefully inadequate. It's completely unacceptable. So on this eminent Denim Day, let us not just recommit to ending domestic violence, but commit to pushing on our federal and state partners to provide the funding this issue deserves. There's a bill currently in Sacramento that would require the state to backfill these cuts. It's called AB 1956. This council has already passed a resolution in support of this bill, but we need everyone in L.A. who cares about this issue to call on your state assembly members, state senators, and the governor's office to support AB 1956. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now I'd like to introduce the Councilmember for the 6th district, Councilwoman Imelda Padilla.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for taking the lead in organizing this presentation and recognition of Denim Day and the important work of Peace Over Violence. I'm very proud to be standing here along with the woman of the city council and the Executive Director of Peace Over Violence, Patty Giggins, to stand up against all the forms of violence against women. In fact, Patty and I go back forming the Women and Girls Initiative at the L.A. County level, so it's always such a breath of fresh air to see you in City Hall, because if she's in the room, you know she's talking about Denim Day and violence against women and how we need to continue to step it up to make changes. So it's very good to see you here. When Denim Day, we all know, was technically this Wednesday, I proudly wear my jeans today with a purpose, to encourage all of us to educate ourselves on why we even have to have Denim Day in the first place. This is not an action I take lightly or an excuse to be more comfortable and casual at work. In fact, the origins of Denim Day are rooted in correcting an injustice. And to be quite honest, when you really look at the history, it's the corrective injustice of bromance, taking more of a bro-to-bro approach to saying that it's a woman's fault when she gets assaulted. So we tell you, male counterparts, that we need you in this fight. We mean it. Because what happened was you had a judge that say it was a woman's fault for wearing her jeans, and this was a European court. So please, we don't say that to you lightly either. Wearing your jeans today comes from this uncomfortable past, so we must make it clear that it is never okay to blame the victim of assault or violence, even from a bro-to-bro perspective. This message is as true now as it was 25 years ago, when activists and women around the world first put on their jeans in solidarity with survivors of assault to protest the decision made by the Italian Supreme Court. Thank you, Peace Over Violence, for sparkling a global movement to stand with survivors of rape and sexual assault and to finally put an end to the wrong and destructive attitudes about sexual assault being something we should address as nonchalantly, because we shouldn't. Thank you again, Patty, and thank you to all my colleagues being here with me today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Padilla. Now I'd like to introduce the Councilwoman for the 10th district, Councilwoman Hutt.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. This has been an experience for me. It was just last year that I participated, and in the steps in front of City Hall with Patty, that Patty made me feel safe enough to talk about being a survivor, to no longer have the fear that I had since I was 13 years old. And so in giving you your flowers, I just want to say how important it is to live outside of fear and push forward. And it's you, Patty, Peace Over Violence, that gives people a safe space, and I thank you for that. It is really meaningful to me. It chokes me up every time. Denim Day is more than just about wearing jeans, but a powerful proclamation that we stand together in solidarity with other survivors of sexual violence, and we say it's not okay. I want to say to men and women that have had these experiences, do not be in fear of sharing it in a safe space with organizations like Peace Over Violence. My time's up?
No.
Oh, okay. And then I also want to say, in the city, we have tools. Our office, along with Council District 8 and Council District 9, male counterparts in the Civil Rights Department, put together a resource guide for people in the city so that if you have had any experiences with domestic violence or sexual violence, you could look to this resource guide. We have it in our offices, and it's also online. So that's just a small step in making a difference in the city, but that's what we're here for. When we work together to make change, change will happen. And I just want to put everybody on notice that this team of councilwomen are making a huge difference in the city, and they are making a difference in things that have been bro-to-bro, things that have been patriarchal. And we are going to work together to make sure that all our constituents are safe. Thank you so much. Thank you, Patty, for all your good work. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hutt. And no, we are reclaiming our time, so I don't care how many times that buzzer goes off. We're going to keep going. And with that, I'd like to introduce Councilmember for the 11th district, Councilwoman Tracy Park.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for your leadership in leading this presentation year after year. And Patty, your work and the dedication that you have demonstrated in standing with and for victims for decades is remarkable. I also want to acknowledge the bravery and courage of Councilwoman Hernandez, Councilwoman Hutt, and Councilwoman Ramon for being willing to speak and share their truths. And I'm really grateful for moments like this, when we can unite and speak to our shared values and acknowledge our joint commitment to raising awareness and combating sexual violence. Patty, being with you and my colleagues on Wednesday, marking the 25th anniversary of Denim Day, was profoundly moving. It was inspiring to see the impact of your work reflected in the voices of everyone who gathered, rallying towards the day in which no woman feels unsafe navigating the streets of Los Angeles. Until that day arrives, I will continue to celebrate and support the work of organizations like Peace Over Violence, who lead by example in providing comprehensive education and intervention strategies. Until then, I also will personally continue fighting for resources to combat sexual violence and support groups like LAPD's Operations West Bureau Special Assault Section. Their recent arrest of the suspect who violently assaulted two innocent women in the Venice Canals prove how invaluable they are to community safety. It was an honor to walk the canals with them yesterday and express my gratitude for their dedication. Hearing their stories and understanding the work they do only reinforces my support for the mission that brings us all here together today. I'm privileged to stand in good company with all of you, united in our shared belief that sexual violence ends with all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Park. And again, so much of this moment is really not a presentation born out of... I have the privilege of leading this presentation, but it's really built on the work that is no small feat, that this dynamic woman... Make no mistake, her stature has nothing on her strength. She's been a powerful force behind what has really helped to shift the conversation, even with respect to our public safety response, to empower survivors to speak their truth and help educate more women on how to stand up strongly for themselves. You give us all the strength and all the power to continue to do what we do, and make no mistake, as we all continue to challenge the patriarchal system that continues to enable this environment, we're going to... You are the honorary 8th member, female member of the city council, and we are so grateful. And I think you're also the honorary 6th supervisor. But I just want to say that you have been an incredible ally and partner for all of us, and it's not enough to just wear denim to show your solidarity, but to show up in policy with, you know, and I put everybody on notice for that, because this is an issue that has not resolved itself on its own, and it will continue to endure unless we all stand up in solidarity with one another. And so Patty, for that, I'm incredibly grateful. Ladies and gentlemen, Patty Giggins.
Wow, I was not expecting that. You've actually taken all the words out of my mouth. You've said everything that I would want to say today. And I thought Wednesday, which is Denim Day, when we were all together was so spectacular, but now this morning, you're just keeping it going, and I'm so grateful to all of you. When we celebrated the 25th anniversary of Denim Day, we can be proud that Denim Day started here in Los Angeles, the first city to declare Denim Day in 1999. And it has spread to cities and counties and states. There's Denim Day in New York. There's Denim Day in Chicago. There's Denim Day in Tennessee. I just got an email that there's a Denim Day in Belarus. So it's become international, and it's because it's such a vital issue, and finally, we've been able to bring attention to sexual violence, domestic violence, and all those other violences that are connected. And the electricity yesterday, I mean, Wednesday, at our beautiful, beautiful event out on the steps of City Hall was amazing. And I think that the fact that we have millions of people who wear denim on purpose, because it is not just... We like to say, make a social statement with your fashion statement. Of course, you know, denim is a very comfortable thing, and what does that mean? But I think with a consciousness, when you get dressed in the morning and you're wearing denim on purpose, it's actually a very intimate thing, because you're putting something on your body. And we know that the violences that happen to women and children and men is also intimate on that intimate level. So the actual putting on the jeans and putting on the jacket, it has become to be a symbolic act of solidarity. And we've made changes over the last 25 years. We've influenced the rise of legal reform and legislative action to increase services and protection for survivors. We've exposed and cleared rape kit backlogs all over the country. Access to technology has helped survivors share their stories, seek services, and report crimes if they so choose. Denim Day has created space for more conversations about sexual violence. We have seen the rise of hashtag Me Too, the upheaval in the entertainment and sports industries. The court victories of E.J. Jean Carroll would not have been possible without these movements and efforts, including Denim Day, for survivors' truths to be told and to be believed. More youth are having conversations about what does it mean to have a healthy relationship, setting boundaries, and prioritizing consent. There's increased awareness that has exposed the depth and breadth of sexual violence in our country and around the world. Rape is now acknowledged as a weapon of war, as we have seen even recently. Rape and intimate partner violence can impact everyone in every community. With better data, we now know that communities of color, BIPOC, LGBTQ, and migrants, people with disabilities, incarcerated persons are disproportionately impacted and vulnerable. The trauma from intimate partner violence is a root cause of so many harms, like homelessness, gun violence, mass shootings, mental illness, substance abuse, and more. To truly end sexual violence, we must connect the dots with the other violences and social issues and recognize the urgency of this intersectionality. Denim Day is just one vibrant opportunity to focus on including all survivors, their families and communities, and support the growing efforts for equity, justice, and a safer world. Once again, I have to speak about the disappointment after having such an incredible Denim Day around the country and around the world, to find out, to wake up yesterday morning to find out that the appellate court in New York overturned the Harvey Weinstein conviction. I mean, that is, you know, in a sense, it's... We went from a kind of collective solidarity to outrage. And it's... If you remember, we just heard the story of Denim Day. It was inspired by a case in Italy where the judge overturned a rape case and the conviction, and the rapist was let out of jail. So this is such an ongoing issue, and as much as we have to advocate and agitate, we cannot lose sight of the fact that this is still an uphill battle, and it does take all of us. And as I'm speaking before you here in these council chambers, victim services programs are under threat of reducing the capacity to provide services to survivors through the pending cutbacks, which you just heard about, from the Federal Victim of Crime Act Funding Program, VOCA funding. At Peace Over Violence, I already had to lay off 50% of my legal department. More cuts are coming in September and in January, and if this draconian cutback happens, there will be 400 agencies in the state of California, sexual assault, domestic violence shelters, child abuse programs, who will be funded by up to 50%. 50%. We have relied on government funding, along with all other kinds of support foundations. We do campaigns. We do galas. We, you know, we do lunches. We beg, right, constantly, to keep these services going while these services are about to be slashed. And so in L.A., we could have as many as 50, 55 agencies who will be cut, along with the 400 total in the state. So I'm using this moment, and I'm so glad that you're already aware and you already care, but we need your clout, your connections, your influence to, you know, talk to the governor, talk to our congresspeople, because this is not only... We're not only advocating in California. This is happening in every state in the Union, right? Next Tuesday and Wednesday, 200 leaders, like myself, we are going to be in Sacramento, and we are going to walk those halls, and we're going to tell the stories of survivors. And we're going to tell the stories how disappointing it is when the judicial system cannot maintain a rape conviction. So here we are, 25 years into Denim Day, 50 years of a violence against women movement in the country, and I'm just so grateful for the support of this body, not just on Denim Day, but all the time. And the fact that I can... I don't even have to come and make speeches anymore, because all of you really understand what's going on, and I can't tell you how gratifying that is. And your support means the world to all of our programs here in the city and county of Los Angeles. So thank you so much.
And Patty, if I can just say, there are few better examples of how one person can really bend the arc of a society. And what you started and what you've continued to be a champion of through Denim Day has really played an essential role in changing the way our society talks about, addresses, responds to sexual violence, and violence in all of its forms. And so all of us, everyone in this society, owes a great debt of gratitude to you for the extraordinary work and leadership and vision that you've shown over all these years. We're very grateful to you. And Councilmember Rodriguez, if I may, before you close, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Council President. Well, I want to just thank Madrina, Councilmember Rodriguez, for leading on so many issues, and especially this one, which is a very important one, and of course, Patty, for all your amazing work that you've done over the many years. And I think several of you all today, which are now seven councilmembers in the city, are saying that the men need to do better, right? And I think a lot of the testimony was incredibly moving, and I think the comments by Councilmember Yaroslavsky were particularly moving, because it reminded me, when I was in college as a volunteer in victims assistance here in the city of Los Angeles, and oftentimes, we would see many women who were fleeing domestic violence, oftentimes with their kids, show up to these offices. And to think of the courage that it takes for someone to do that, to take that step... And to think of the courage that it takes for someone to do that, to take that step, but then only to be met with little to no resources, is an absolute failure of the city. And our budgets are moral documents, and so what better way to talk about it than right now, as we're getting into budget season? And so I'm ready to throw down, you know, support and solidarity, because if we're trying to smash the patriarchy, I'm down with that, because it's one of many oppressive systems that continue to lay huge shadows over our entire society. So, but again, thank you again for your leadership, and I'll let y'all take the lead, and I'll be following along. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I think, I think we're all down with this. And I think we're all exceptionally proud, by the way, to be members of a city council that, for the first time in the history of the city of Los Angeles, has achieved essential gender equity. And we're grateful to all of our extraordinary leaders of this city who are standing up here, the seven women councilmembers who have achieved this historic first, and we look forward to continuing to stand as your allies in the work that you do. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you so much. Well, we look forward to continuing to build on this history, because we're not done. And I'm just really grateful, again, Patty, for all of your continued enduring leadership, for all the survivors whose voices, who are not celebrities, the everyday victim that has endured these traumas, that you've given space for them to have a voice and to be recognized and to have the strength to tell their stories. I'm just incredibly grateful for the example that you've given, even when this council didn't have a single woman representing on this city council. You were here, I know. And so you have been an extraordinary force, and for that, we are all indebted to you. Thank you for 25 years of leadership. Thank you to Peace Over Violence. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, 25 years of Denim Day in LA. Thank you for this.
I just want to add, and thank you so much for appreciating me, but I have to, Peace Over Violence, you know, we have a staff of, well, we have a staff of 60. It may go down soon. But we are part of a network, sexual assault centers, domestic violence centers. All of us use volunteers. We need our volunteers who come from the community. So many people who work in our field are survivors. So this is a survivor-led movement. And I'm talking also about male survivors, child survivors. And so I accept this on behalf of Peace Over Violence, but I'm so proud that we have built a network through the city of LA. There's services in every one of your districts. And we all know each other, and we all work together, and we all support each other, and in the county and in the state. And I'm hoping that this is just a blimp in the process of the success that we're gonna keep having, of honoring survivors and make, as you say, making it safe for survivors to tell their stories, but more importantly, preventing the violence from happening in the first place.
Thank you very much, Patty. Next, I'd like to call on